Seven to one, I'm going to call the House of Representatives for a meeting to order. Save a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, a little self-help silence during the meeting. I look for an approval of the agenda.
Move the proposal.
Section. All okay, will say aye?
Aye.
Item five, public appearances and citizens' comments. There's no one here, so we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
What is number, or C? That's just something you have to do every year?
You don't have to do it every year, but employee trust funds recently that the Wisconsin Public Employers Group Health Insurance made a change with the company they're using. And so, we by virtue of using that company have to then renew it, so we're contracting with the company. So the ETF sent it out to us and said, "Here, if you want to continue in our program, we need you to do this resolution." So it's a formality on their end that we're...
Okay.
And we do use that for group contributions. So move approval of the consent agenda.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
No questions here. Item seven, Public Works Public Safety Consideration Resolutions 1914, Appointment of Public Works Laborer.
Thumbs up on the...
Thumbs up.
On the choice, great.
Experienced. He worked eleven or twelve years for the city of Verona. He was one of their best operators that they had up there. He left to go make more money. Driving over the road truck and found out that that's not the most glamorous lifestyle he ever went through. But all the background checks on him are really good. Everything's so...
Did you have a good group of applicants?
We had, I think, total, I had twenty-four applicants. We got it down to four. We interviewed four. And out of those top four, it was a matter of, we literally had some of our own kind of design. The one at the very last minute withdrew. And so I put another one in his spot right away. And it come down to it, yeah, it was written down. We scored them. We had numerous amount of questions that we asked them and points scored them. And everybody on the committee came on with Kirk here.
Does he live in town?
He actually lives right up, just like July.
Oh, okay.
Is where he lives. So his response time will be okay for getting here. Yeah.
So, how did you, who set the 2293? Did you, or the committee, or?
I did.
You did. Okay. I think that's a little high. And I'm going to tell you why. Because twenty-two months ago, we started Chuck at 2135, which is a buck, he's a buck fifty-eight cents higher than we started Chuck at twenty-two months ago. And I'm a little concerned that without a village administrator being in this place, that you didn't talk to me, or live, or bring this to public state, finance personnel before offering this offer. I understand he's qualified. Kirk has worked for me. He's done Chuck for me. I know him personally. But I, I don't know. I think that, because right now, starting from the 2293 and what Chuck is currently making, there's only going to be forty-two cents an hour difference. Well, I don't know where we want to go with this.
I was going to ask the same question. What was this based on?
I took it as Chuck is making 2363 an hour.
2335. Right then.
Yeah, I mean, I took that off of the payroll, so 2335, that should, that should be correct.
Because I had 2363 an hour for Chuck, and I had 26 something for Gary.
Yeah, 26 something for Gary is right.
Right.
So we have some wiggle room. That isn't the, because we're saving budget-wise, not paying Gary the 26, but I just think you created this short gap here for Chuck, between Chuck and him.
What were, can you give me a reminder on like, when Chuck came in, what, what was his like experience level?
I wouldn't know anymore now. You have any idea on that, Joe?
I don't think Chuck was nearly qualified compared to what, what this guy is. This guy already is coming with jetter experience, equipment experience, asphalt experience, concrete experience, driving truck, plowing, operating heavy equipment. Chuck had none of that. In fact, when Brian found out that Chuck was best friends with Gary, and that's how he got the job, Brian actually said there was another guy that was a lot more qualified. And he took their opinion out of it. So, and I look at it as, is the guy's coming in highly qualified. If you're going to get somebody like that, and that's what we put the application out for, is somebody that was qualified. When Chuck came in here, it also said that they could get their CDL within six months. They had to have the CDL when they come. We took that out. And this guy's already got it. He's got years of experience. His driving record's clean. Everything's clean with him. If you want those kind of people, you're going to have to pay them. Or otherwise, those people are not going to come. I think that was the reason why the other guy was worried. And he, he withdrew because he said, "I just, there's no way I could do that." What's that? Uh, commercial driver's license.
What about, what about looking at future? So after a year, this guy gets a buck more, 22, 2393 an hour. How does that compare to where Chuck?
Well, I would think that we base this on because there is a labor one, labor two, and a labor three position. And we based it on that Chuck is working his way up. And I am really impressed on how Chuck has stepped up. As in, doing a lot of stuff. Like when I went to wastewater treatment school, he stepped up. He ran streets for a week. He took care of everything for me. I had no problems, that kind of stuff. And I would think that the, sooner or later, I, I would really like to take it to finance and see if we could bump him up at least a little bit. Because honest truthfully, he's still going to be training somebody. And he is stepping up. I mean, he's going to be sweeping. He's going to be, he's doing it now, so...
But he's at 2335.
According to what?
Yeah, that's what I have in mind.
Okay, so, so what is he considered labor?
Two.
He's a two.
Two, so...
That's a job description. We don't really have a wage scale that goes with those job descriptions. That's something that, it was part of the union thing when we had a union there. And, you know, Gary kept that position after the union was gone. And we have those two job descriptions. And that was something I think Brian really wanted to work on, was getting wage scales put in place so we would have...
And the people would have a plan and all of this kind of thing.
Right, right.
Based on...
But we don't have it right now.
So, under this, the new guy, Kirk, in a year's time, he would be at 2393. Where would Chuck be? Is there, is he on a, is he on a...
No, he would just get whatever...
A percent increase.
One percent, two percent.
There's no, there's nothing, there's nothing...
He got his year increase. When he was here a year, he got his bump.
There's not a salary schedule in place that would like plan out years of service movement for him?
But that's where I would go to Personnel and Finance and request if he could get a, like, even if he bumped up to 25. Because he's the senior guy. He's doing everything. As in that point of teaching, that kind of stuff.
Right, but what I want to know is where would he be in a year?
Well, that'd be, I guess, down to Personnel and Finance.
There's nothing set.
No, there's nothing set, Joe. We just, if we say we're going to give employees a ten percent, percent, percent and a half, or two percent, that's what he would get. So he got his...
Oh, if he got, he got a...
The two percent, that's the way it appears.
He's actually had two dollar an hour increases since he started. So less than two years, he's had two dollars an hour. And that's how we got to...
Okay, I was going to say...
Okay, those are just based on everybody.
So he's got...
Well, there's some...
There was no scale.
There's no scale.
Well, we definitely need scale.
So one option here would be if you want to hire this person at this rate, and then say after one year satisfactory, you know, because one year is basically probation anyway. That you bring it back and you talk about it again.
Based on performance.
You know, because Joe would do the performance evaluation. And you can come into Finance and Personnel and say, "This is what I see, and this is what I recommend." And you take it from there. Part of the reason I think that, and I encouraged Joe to put the dollar, you know, like, put in here because it was an issue when Chuck was getting those dollars. It wasn't, there was nothing concrete in writing, as he said. And so we're like, let's...
Have a plan written in the resolution.
Yeah. So whether that plan is a dollar, or it's come back, and we'll, we'll talk about it.
Chuck's already hammering me about getting more money because he's going to be, you know, he's stepping up. He's trying to do all this stuff. And like he said, I'm going to push the point. He said that, you know, they should, they should pay me accurately for that. Because he's got somebody that had 28 years of experience that's sitting in his back pocket saying, "Don't do it unless they pay him." "Don't do it unless they pay him." Because that's how I had to push it. And that's what he's, he's listening to that. He's just, he's drawing that in.
But it sounds like this person is wanting to come in with more I would think so. Qualifications. Like, this Kirk is already able to do more things than probably Chuck can do right now. True?
Yeah, well, I would think he's pretty accurate to it.
Like, Chuck didn't get a CDL then?
No, Chuck, Chuck's always had a CDL.
Oh, he does?
Yeah.
So what are some...
So some of the things, like jetting was one of the things that we hire on, streets experience in that. The problem that happened here was Gary was the doer. Chuck, you go up there, I do this. You don't run the loader because the loader's mine. You don't do, you don't do that because now I am literally watching Chuck go over to the jetter, grab the jetter, start it up, grab it. He's in the loader. He's, you know, he's trying to do this kind of stuff because he doesn't have that person there saying, "No, that's mine, that, you don't touch that." And there's a lot of little stuff that he never even knew. This pool, this pool is going to be a whole different operation. We went down there the other day just trying to figure out the valves and stuff like that. We don't know. And Chuck literally was told, "No, you go do, you go do this work because I do this." And now when it comes down to the work, we have no idea what Gary did.
So Roger, your concern was more about inequity between the new guy and the guy that's been here. Is that right?
Well, yeah, that and I just...
Or was it more about just too much money?
Well, I mean, if Joe feels that he's that well-qualified, which I, you know, like I said, Kirk's worked for me, so I'm probably pretty sure he is. And that, just that starting out that high was a little bit of my concern. And the difference, but, you know, you just said something about you'd like to get Chuck up to $25 an hour. Well, we don't have in the budget to do that.
My biggest thing on that is, is like I said, I have to take that Personnel and Finance. That's not my call for Chuck. Because he's already hired here. If Personnel and Finance says, "No, we can't afford that. We're going to leave it like this." That's not my call. I mean, understand the wrath of what can happen is the lips can shut right up and nothing happens. But if, you know Kirk, like I, kind of figuring out on Kirk is, he's going to just be able to do it. So it's that change that's going to happen of, you know, this is the way the streets department's going. And that's what I need.
Well, as I see it, we're caught without a, we're caught without a set pay rate for these positions. That's a bad situation. I don't know how that happened. But it's a fact.
Well, he probably left after I passed him. It was eliminated when...
It's part of the immediate contract.
That's what happened with ours too.
Well, either way, the fact exists that we're caught without a pay scale.
It would have to become part of like policy or like an employee handbook or...
So it's obvious you need to implement a pay scale of some sort, whether it's percentages, dollars per hour, cents per hour, based on performance, obviously, and all the usual things. Doesn't matter if you're union, you have to do these things. But my question is, if this what it takes, if this is what it takes to hire a qualified person, then, then this is what it takes. And you work out the particular later. And I think the dollar an hour increase should not be written in concrete like this. I think it makes sense.
I like Lynn's suggestion, saying we'll evaluate, and in the meantime, we can work on the scale.
And I think you could word that not as, as a set figure, but as pay, you know, pay rates based on performance.
As evaluation. That it will get you.
Yeah. And I mean, it might not go up a buck. Who knows? I, I just, that was just numbers, but we could say, we could just say with a...
Well, can this resolution be amended to say after one year of employment upon satisfactory review of performance, the hourly rate of pay may be increased by up to one hour? By up to?
I wouldn't even, I wouldn't...
No, I wouldn't put a number in.
I wouldn't put a number in, exactly.
Yeah, but I think just... Needs to be brought to Finance's course, you know, and determine that the hourly rate of pay will be reevaluated.
Adjusted.
Or, or something to the effect of the prevailing wage scale, whatever. We're going to have to come up, we're going to have to come up with a...
Well, kind of like what police just did.
I don't want to go through this again. We're going to have to come up with a...
Police, you know, just did that one, three, five, seven, nine for each...
That's part of the comp union, huh?
Right.
Yeah, they're unionists.
But I mean, like, that's what you're talking about. It's something like that that has a plan so that you know what's starting for this position. And that you can kind of plot out where it's going.
Right, right. If, if we were hiring a labor one, which was just a person that's coming in ground level, yeah, we would be lucky if we paid them eighteen, nineteen bucks an hour. Valvilles is starting theirs out at nineteen something an hour. But the problem of it is there is, they also have five guys on the ground where, I mean, they, they do, they do everything. They do everything. Where we have wastewater treatment plant, we have our water guys, and all these guys do streets. And, I mean, they're not, we're looking at a guy that's coming in with experience. They're looking at somebody that's ground, starting ground level. They don't care, you know, so...
But there, again, getting back to the pay scale, that's what we need to do. We need to go to the surrounding...
Get the comparables and...
Municipalities and, and see what the prevailing wages are. And so that we're, just like we did with the police, even though they have a...
Right.
And they did it themselves, because of their...
And this has become more of an issue recently with people leaving.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like, this is what happens when people with twenty-five to thirty years of experience suddenly, within a two-year span, or...
Yeah, they were all, you know, they were people that lived here and wanted to live here.
Right, and then suddenly...
Moving or anything.
Now it's something that has to be done.
Yeah.
So...
So do you want, are you thinking strike that hole?
I'd say maybe, would say after...
The hourly rate of pay shall be reevaluated?
Adjusted according to...
Then go up to Finance, before Finance and Personnel, I hope.
Um...
We would.
Or, kind of situation shall be whatever with pay raises. Pay, future pay based on performance and, and the... I don't know what the word is. Pay scale, the, the rate of pay set by...
So you can strike the whole, the whole thing?
Yeah, we can strike the whole sentence, just to be honest with this.
I mean, has it been, and then work on a, a pay scale?
It wasn't in the last one, right? It wasn't in Chuck, in Chuck's?
Right, it was not. And it was my thought to put it in because of the issues we had.
Where it was just...
Well, where's, where's, where's Kirk? Is this like something he demanded? Is this something like you offered?
No, I offered. And he said, "I understand that I'll take a pay cut just to take and do this." But he says, "I, I, I don't want to drive over the road truck anymore." And he says, "I understand that."
But that sentence was put, that sentence was put in because of what had happened with the last person we hired, who was given dollar pay increases outside of the two percent that...
You mean, this Chuck?
Yeah, right.
I don't know what I'm saying, but this Chuck.
And see all that Chuck before I got married.
Those were a full agreement with the past.
And, and when Joe and I talked about it, we were just trying to prevent that from happening again. So we thought, maybe if we would put something in writing, it would make sense. But I don't know anymore that it does.
Yeah, something in writing is fine. But I don't think we should have a dollar figure in there. I mean, anybody would expect a pay increase on a manual basis.
I think this one in particular is like probationary period, and then you get a larger bond.
Well, what if you switch the two sentences around and just say, "The hourly rate of pay shall be increased according to satisfactory review of work performance after one year of employment."
And the wage scale at the time of evaluation?
Yeah, just switch the sentence around and...
Something in that, because we're going to have... Words for me. We're going to have some kind of...
But then like, if you don't put anything in there, then you, as a board and finance, can relook at the salary schedule and base it on that rather than a dollar. You know what I mean? If you don't put any dollar in here and you just say, "The hourly rate of pay shall be adjusted after one year of employment and upon satisfactory review of work performance," then you're just saying you're going to review it based on whether you make a two percent wage increase for all staff or whether you have a salary schedule in place.
Yeah, or, you know, it's always open negotiation.
Yeah.
You know, if we have a wonder kid here, and they come in and they say, "Well, I need more money, and this person is doing everything."
Right.
You know, you know, you know.
Yeah, right.
So like, okay, you've got something to negotiate with.
Right.
And the opposite could happen too.
Does that work for people to like take that out?
So you want to strike the whole after one year of employment? Or do you want to replace it with something?
Or change it to say, "The hourly rate of pay shall be adjusted after one year of employment and upon satisfactory review of..." Yeah, may, sorry. That's right, that's the major word tonight. Take out "shall." Shall, may be adjusted after one year of employment and upon satisfactory review of work performance.
And that's not to say that after we research all of this, come up with a wage scale that, you know, might, that we might have to do this. But if we don't, I don't want to be locked into a market that we're not, you know, paying over market. And if it's a, if it's a do or die thing for him, I guess we'll back for the drawing board. If he says, "No, hell no, I'm not going to accept that."
He, he very steady to accept the hourly wages starting. It's what goes into the other aspect is heal. I am sure it's not a, I think we can guarantee it.
Right.
So what do you think about the getting back to the starting wage? Do you think, you still think it's...
Well, if Joe feels he's that well-qualified, and like I said, he's worked for me, I guess it's okay. Like, we have, you know, we got from 2293 up to $26, so we already budgeted $26 for Gary, so...
Right, but we don't want to get locked in with something.
I, I, I know that.
I know what you're saying.
Because we're going to...
We can afford it. We can afford it.
But again, we're going to have Chuck buried down on us too, at some point.
So do you think this is an issue with Chuck? That he's going to come back?
Oh, I, I, he's already talked to me.
Yeah?
But not based on this person's...
He probably feels, he probably, honestly, he said on the committee to hire him. And I'll guarantee it, he probably feels threatened because this guy's coming in with a lot of experience.
Yeah, okay.
He doesn't know what there is, hourly wages, like...
But he's not going to come in and say, "Well, hell, if you're going to pay him that much, either pay me this or I quit."
No, he's, he's looking at the aspect of saying, he checks smart enough to already know that Gary told him what he was making. And I said, "Well, you got to take into consideration, that's 28 years." And also, Gary did everything. Gary got paid for that. "Well, I'm going to be doing everything." "No, you're not." "You're not, but you got..." I mean, I understand what he's saying is, you know, "I'm still teaching this guy how to pick up the trash. I'm going to have to teach him, you know, like, you know, where we plow, how we plow." And I'm thinking, "Well, you're going to show him the route, no different than I was showing. Here's your route." "Okay, I had the experience, it didn't bother me." And that's the way this guy's going to go. This guy's going to get the truck and go. "Okay, see ya." He's going to look at me and go, "What do you want Sol to say then?" And he's going to say, "How do you want that?" It's going to be done.
From what you know about him, Roger, you're comfortable with his...
Yeah.
Him as a, as an employee and...
Yeah.
As a driver and...
He's going to show up for work.
Yeah, yeah. He always will say everyone.
I mean, that's a huge thing right there.
So, and actually, the offer's been made and been accepted, so I don't think we can mess around with this 2293. You know, that's my feeling.
But I also think that like, from what we've talked about, I mean, obviously, I don't want these jobs, but that we have some reason to offer this person more than we offered.
Yeah, there's justification.
There's justification for this person being more qualified than...
Then he should be starting then.
Than Chuck was when he started. You know, like, I'd honestly have more questions about like, how this is already happening.
Yeah. But that was part of the past, that's what we're...
Right, I understand. I understand.
Yeah, now we know we're qualified. And, but I think that recommendation is good. Or this person?
Well, then I would make a motion to approve Resolution 1914 with the last sentence being amended as...
I got to read, "The hourly rate of pay may be adjusted after one year of employment and upon satisfactory review of performance." I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
The whole, what's your theory? Item eight, whole board business, Consideration Ordinance 1902, Dividing for Filling of Board, Board Vacancy. Amended section 42.6. Amended section forty-two six on page twelve.
It looked like what we had decided, so I didn't see any problem.
I think everything's there.
Yeah. All of these changes that were in, the old minutes and discussion were made. You know, everything that I can see from page five up here is on here now. So we don't need a public hearing to put this into.
We do not need a public hearing.
Why is that, by the way?
Um, if I remember right, the attorneys told us if, if the ordinance has a fine or forfeiture connected to it, you need to have a public hearing on it, this does not, and he specifically had that on when he had written it. But just keep in mind, it doesn't become effective until it's published, which will be published.
So public hearings are required when there is a.
So like, that's why we had a public hearing on parking, a public hearing on the street.
Yeah, or you can always have a public, you can always. And you can always have them on something if you think it shouldn't be, I mean, if you think it's controversial or.
Yeah, yeah, it's up to us.
Yeah.
But it doesn't.
Right, it's not required.
Okay.
I have a little approval of ordinance nineteen oh two.
Second.
So we have this vacancy to fill, so how soon do we, do you want this published, like, in the paper, on our website? And how soon do we wanna get it out there?
That's a question I had, what is our official publication? When you say it has to be published.
Well, this will be published in the post messenger recorder.
So it has to be published in there?
Yeah, so it won't go in till next.
Thing of record.
Yeah.
So that will go in.
Next Thursday.
Eleven. So then you really can't publish.
We can't do anything.
An opening.
No.
The vacancy until.
Until after.
We can't do anything until publication.
Does it need to be only published once then?
Yes.
So if it comes out next Thursday, in the following week, we could do something, or?
So on the April sixteenth board meeting, there could be.
We could initiate.
There could be an agenda item initiating a vacancy.
We could initiate this at the April sixteenth meeting, right, if we.
Cause it would already be published, so this would be in effect.
Yeah. So, so at that time, it would be an agenda item under filling the vacancy.
Does it have to go to finance, personnel first then, or can it come right to the board then?
It could come right to the board. So put an item on the four sixteen meeting to discuss filling the vacancy.
Proceeding.
Discussion and consideration.
Start the process.
Yeah.
Item for consideration, whatever, however you word those.
So determining how to fill the vacancy.
Yeah, so.
Well, we know how we're gonna fill the vacancy, it's just publishing it, how, uh, put it out there for the public to.
Right, we'll start that. It's a policy, start that discussion at sixteen, we have to say, okay, let's do this or let's.
Well, you're gonna have to say though, like, you're not holding a special election.
As, under number two.
Of selection candidates.
Yeah.
But we don't have to.
Right.
That's all a lot.
Right, but I mean, like, this whole process will be, okay, we're not holding a special election, it's silly to spend.
No, right, I mean, it's our choice after the six, you know, once this is.
Right, cause number one is.
We can do it.
The village may determine to hold a special election.
Well. Probably like another election.
At a council.
I like, I like.
Put it right in.
Election where I write in five ballots.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carried. President's report, um, minimum, it's some pace on board review.
Rachel is going to do the certification, if anybody else is interested in doing the certification, let me know.
Also, well, Patty has also certified.
She was before too, so I'm guessing she'll run again. Open work April thirtieth, from four-thirty to six-thirty, board review Thursday, May ninth, or Monday, May thirteenth, five to seven. Which one of those would you prefer? Uh, the Monday, better for me. Anybody else have thoughts? Either one works?
I guess so.
All lines are bad for me for working that day, but it doesn't make any difference.
Hopefully.
Five to seven, we should, yeah, hopefully we'll be done by seven. Okay, so we'll categorize, I gotta get that in the paper right away this, next week too, so.
Dave? Anything else?
I just wanted to let you know that I talked to Jeff, Michael Crowe, and Travis Cisco about the proclamation about basketball. They are working on planning a thing with some sort, and so Mr. Cisco thought that maybe that would be like an appropriate time for you to present that, they don't have a date on it right now, so I'll make sure that I get that to you when they don't want.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, we are adjourned.